Okay, welcome everyone to the January 5th Strattford School Board meeting. We've already had our roll call. We went to non-public. In non-public, we discussed contracts and personnel issues. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, next we have approval of the school board minutes, public and non-public, from 12:11. So, do we have a motion?
I move we approve our public and non-public meeting minutes from the December 11 meeting.
Wait a second.
I will second.
Okay, discussion. I think the only thing we were talking about is on page nine, under the community members that sent emails, there may have been a couple more that ends up in our spam folder. Did anybody find that other one? All right, right here we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven emails. I thought we had a couple more.
On page...
F-R-O-B-Y-N, is it?
R-O-B-Y-M. F-I-C-E-K.
F-I-C-E-K.
Well, but if that go to our spam folder and we didn't get it then, did we bring it up during this week's correspondence?
Oh, you know what, that's a good point.
It wasn't a part of it.
Yeah, it wasn't actually, unfortunately, yeah, we probably shouldn't, that's a good point, yep. We will recognize that in this meeting. So, we'll be in this minutes that we, this meeting's minutes, not, we're not going to adjust it to last because we didn't actually read it through. Was there anybody else who read that we need to recognize during that time? Just something? Okay.
There were just two.
Just two, okay. All righty, anything else?
On page nine, I have the right-hand corner. I didn't know, this is like a motion pass for a one, do we say who the one, do we, like Kyle voted no, do we list? Or do you just say 401?
I haven't in the past.
Okay, I wasn't sure how we typically do that. If we recognize how the vote goes or no.
I remember how to, I know if you abstain.
Abstain, then you would recognize who abstained.
Um...
I know if you've jumped to something in non-public. You're supposed to put who had jumped, but I, I don't think.
I, I think, I think we have because then it will say, well, who, right now we know, but like next year we won't remember.
I...
Do you want me to look it up?
I don't, I guess you can call it up.
All right.
Sure, I just can't remember how we did it.
I think it really depends on, on your style.
Oh, so it's not a Robert rule?
I don't do, I don't believe so, and I think it really, um...
What do you want me to do?
I, I think we should do it.
I think we should include it only because we'll forget.
Because part of it, we're not even required to take roll call votes anymore. That was a COVID thing, you know? People just used to say aye or nay or whatever. But I like that we do it this way, I like roll call votes.
I'll adjust it.
All right. All righty, anything else? I just want there's one thing at the end that's...
Um, under other, so other is usually, like, for example, the first one, A, the board discussed the minimal use. I feel like that was just like a point that Debbie brought up. And then the second point was something that Kyle mentioned, but there wasn't like board discussion. And I said, I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
I don't know, oh.
The board discussed.
It's on page 14, the very last, other, other.
Yeah.
So, you could, you could, we did, we did discuss the, the thing about the phone, because Rob talked about it. And we talked about the, um, talked about the, that he had...
Oh, yeah.
He had discussed with the administration that the attorney had advised us not to do it. So, there was discussion on that one.
I thought there was a response to Kyle's question though, I thought.
No.
No.
It wasn't, okay. So, would you like that just to say, Mr. Scouten brought it up?
However, yeah, however Kyle remembered what he said.
Yeah.
Well, let's go back and watch the video.
Yeah, yeah, commented.
Probably sufficient what's in written, just put my name next to it if you want.
Okay. So, but for the first one, I have written, I just wanted to be clear. The board discussed minimal use of personal phones by the administrators pertaining to work before, work before business cell phones are used as recommended by the district attorney. Because our attorney has told us not to use personal cell phones.
Not to be confused with district attorney.
Yeah. What did it say?
I'll say district's attorney.
Yeah.
No, what it says, what it says, right.
Yes, the district's attorney.
I was just making a little joke.
I thought it was funny, nice smile.
All right, so anything else?
I had another thing on page 14, under facilities committee at the top.
Okay.
So, first, number one there, I think it should say, I think the auditors are to weigh in on the maintenance and cleanliness of the facility, not the construction.
Oh, I saw that, yes, 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 yeah.
Weigh in on the, say it again.
Maintenance and cleanliness of the facility vice construction. And then, I had a question, I just don't know the proper terminology. On page 12, under letter M, the educational freedom account, are they considered a support program? It just sounded funny to me that they're not considered.
Yes, for Stafford.
Under M, it says the board discussed the state's EFA educational freedom account support program for Stafford.
How about just remove a support and just put program?
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Because really it's not, I wouldn't call it a support program, yep.
That was all.
Okay.
And, and then just real quick back on that facility committee. Number two, just water quality, the water quality is incorrect.
All right, good, thank you. Looks really good.
We're getting there.
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yeah.
Kyle? And Debbie S. All righty, so, next.
Hold on, did we discuss the non-public minutes?
Oh, didn't we, I thought the motion was approved both.
It was, but we didn't just...
Was there any discussion on it?
No, but did we discuss that there was no discussion on it?
Um... Non-public session, we're in a non-public session over here.
Okay.
Um, and we, the motion was for both, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and we didn't have any corrections for it.
Yep.
Okay, good. All righty. All right, so, next, superintendents report. We have the manifest is circulating. Do we have any questions about the manifest? No, everything good?
I haven't seen it yet.
Have you seen it?
Everybody want to?
Everybody, yeah.
Nope, okay. Jess is the manifest queen over there.
This is the next, so, this she's, we had already approved her.
Okay.
We forgot to actually bring it to you for signature. So, you can see how old it is.
But the board made...
The board approved it maybe a long time ago.
All right, I'm, I am now hiring a con, um, I'm now signing a contract for someone that was hired two months ago. Okay.
She signed it, we had it in the binder, we just noticed that her signature was...
And the board approved.
Yeah, the board approved, we have the minutes, everything else we checked.
Most of these days.
The eighth. Start with a summary. This is a letter of resignation for Mark Pena, who is, I think it might be pronounced Penna, but I'm not positive. I always call him Mark. Mark has been an employee here for quite some time as a custodian. I cannot speak highly enough of Mark, I think he was phenomenal. And we're very sad that he has ended his employment with us. He says he's still available if we need him to come back and train somebody or even on an interim basis, just to kind of fill in a little bit here and there. So, we may be giving him a call for that, but he did, his last official day was December 27th. And, you know, I just want the board to, you know, acknowledge what a great employee he was and that he's been part of this community for a while.
Will he be available to serve?
That, he's saying, he's saying on a limited basis, if we give him a call and he can make it fit into his schedule, that he'll definitely help out. He, he says he loved it here and everything else, so.
Great.
This was personal reasons.
Okay, would someone like to accept the resignation of Mark?
Yep, I move we accept the resignation of Mark Penna from his position as part-time custodian and thank him for his many years of service.
Okay, we have a second, a second, okay, discussion? Yes, thank you, Mark, we hope you'll be able to serve for us. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie S. Okay.
This next one. Sorry, get back to my copy. This next one is the hiring of a part-time day custodian. Name is Kenneth Belier, is that how you pronounce it? Belie, belie.
Okay, no, that's spelled differently than what I thought.
Belier.
Belier, belier, thank you. So, Kenneth Belier, he was interviewed, the committee felt very highly of him. He comes strongly recommended and I bring his name to the board for approval to replace Mark. If that's even possible. Big shoes.
Okay, I move that we accept the nomination for the position of part-time custodian to be filled by Kenneth, I'm sorry, Bell...
Belier?
Belier, I'm sorry, I, I have a thing about names and I don't like to mispronounce them, Belier. For the part-time position up to six hours a day or 30 hours a week. At a salary of $18 per hour from our local operating budget.
Okay, do we have a second, a second, discussion? What, is he starting immediately or?
On Monday.
Monday, great. All righty, okay, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie S, there you go.
We can sign that.
Okay, this is...
That's for him.
I am signing his...
All right. The next two coming around to you are both paraprofessionals. The first one that we'll look at is for Alexis Gothier. She is going to be going from a full-time paraprofessional to a part-time paraprofessional. She's a valued member of our staff, we're excited that she's willing to stay on with us, but she does, for personal reasons, need to work fewer hours. I think down the road, our hope would be that maybe that will transition back, but for now, that's the hope, is that the board will say yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the reclassification of Alexis Gothier for the part-time, to part-time paraprofessional from full-time paraprofessional. Effective 1/9/2025.
Okay, we have a second?
We have a second?
Discussion?
Up to six hours a day, up to 30 hours a week.
So, okay, even though that she's part-time, we're still including it?
We always, with the part times, go up to six hours a day, 30 hours a week, so that we have that flexibility. She's already indicated to us that she's not going to be able to work more than, I think it's 24, right?
Okay.
But we have that flexibility in case, let's say we needed her a little bit extra one week and she said she could do it, we would want to have that ability to take.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie S.
I did not bring any of your contracts, so I'll bring that to the next meeting. Uh, next, Kate Dolan is a new full-time paraprofessional that we're bringing to you and nominating. Kate, once again, comes highly recommended. The committee was extremely excited about her, from what I hear from other staff that have worked with her as a, in the sub-type of position. She has done a wonderful job for us, and so there's a real desire to have her come aboard as one of our full-time paras. She would be HQT, which is lovely. She will be starting at step one and she would have all of the benefits per the CBA at an hourly rate of 17.12 an hour.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we accept the nomination of Kate Dolan for the position of full-time paraprofessional. Benefits for the CBA, prorated for the rest of the year, obviously. And at the HQT track, step one, with a rate of 17.12 approximately.
Okay, second, a second, discussion? And will Kate start?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, I thought, I'm pretty sure it was right away.
Great, great. Okay, all right, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie S.
Signing that one. With the approval of that position, we now have three full-time open paraprofessional positions remaining. Two of those are being filled by those contracted physicians. And I'm hoping to the next meeting, they're, they're doing some interviews right now, I'm hoping to bring at least one more to our next board meeting. So, we're getting closer and closer, and I do thank the board for your patience as we move that along. The next one is for Kelly Goodman. She has been a paraprofessional here for a period of time. She has been out for quite a while and at this point, she is no longer going to be working for the district. Doesn't mean at some point she won't come back, but for right now, I just wanted to give the board that heads up that, that has happened, I don't know if you need to accept that or...
Accept the resignation?
Yeah.
I think we should, yep. If someone would like to make a motion?
I move we accept the nomination.
Resign.
Resignation of Kelly Goodman from the position of paraprofessional.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second?
Discussion, so she, when did she resign?
It's more of a lack of response, so it's, um...
Okay.
It was in December, but we have officially made the process complete at this point. I don't have a specific date, it's effective as your, as of your vote.
All righty, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie S, all right?
Okay, ongoing completed board meeting task lists. So, any questions?
Has, has that AED been installed outside yet?
Good question.
I know, I think we would...
I'm betting no. The reason I say is I think we were waiting on that grant to get us the cabinet and the grant, I just found out yesterday, got denied.
Okay.
So, we are now gonna have to probably use a different part of our budget to purchase that.
Okay. I, I feel like that's an item fairly high in priority. I'd like to see that outside, I don't know.
Lifesaving.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get the cabinet mounted. That was relatively inexpensive, the cabinet. We were just, we had that all woven into that grant application that we were really hopeful for because we were going to bring us a couple more AEDs as well, but it didn't work out. I'll put that down as a new task to get done. Any other ongoing tasks, questions?
Um, as far as like the grant application for the generator, what's the timeline for that?
So, uh, next Tuesday, I think it is, we're meeting with the folks from the state. The new chief at the fire department's going to be joining and we're going to be meeting in the SAU conference room. So, two gentlemen from the state will be coming to meet with us too and they're going to explain the various grants that are available, the application process, the deadlines, et cetera. We are still well in advance of any of those deadlines, so it's not like we've missed anything. It's just taking a little bit of time to get us all onto the same page.
Yeah.
But it will have to be the town that applies, has to be the emergency manager that applies to these grants, that would be the fire chief. I'm going to make myself fully available to help in any way that I can. So, for example, we have already gone and gotten a quote.
Yeah.
And it was only, we only had the one quote come back, so even if it's a sole source issue, I think we made good effort, we put out an RFP, we received one app and we accepted it. So, I think we can be able to check off those boxes because of the work that we've done. But it's hard to say right this second what the timeline for that's going to look like, but it will have to be the town that does the application. Any other?
I, I've lost track of where we're at with that, with that water lead too. I know, I think we paused it for a while. It might have been getting someone to...
Well, well, he needed to take some trim and things off, but he would give you advice, but we really feel like that needs to be put out for bid.
Okay.
That was, I think, there was interest in getting like a price on that.
Yeah.
And so, I think that really what we need to do, um, I mean, anybody could take the, some of the pieces off to look to see if the frame looks rotted, but we'll take the fr, take the pieces off to look at and see if the frame is rotted and give you that information. But we think it's better to put it out for bid rather than have somebody else already give you a bid, which would be solicited instead of letting everybody have a chance to put a bid out.
So, I think the thing that we were trying to get was if it's not, if it's not rotted at the stud level
Right, right.
that this is an in-house project, we're not going to put it out to bid.
Right. It's more cosmetic.
It, it's, thank you, that's a great way of putting it. So, that's what we were hoping, he was going to be able to tell us, is this cosmetic? Is it the outer layer, the envelope?
Right.
Or is there actual stud issues? So, if there's a way that he can give us that
Just to...
feedback?
Yes.
That would be lovely, if he can't, then yes, I, the spring will go out and rip the side off.
Well, that's what he thought that the facility manager could do, the same thing he was going to do and because he did not want to give a bid, I did not want to give a bid because I didn't feel that that is right and ethical. That it would be better to put it out for everyone to give a bid, so should we?
So, that update, should we just craft out acquired quotes and just have an assessment on there?
I think that's an, oh, yeah, assessment, it should be an assessment, yeah.
This, this rolls into what we're working on for the district meeting because when we're going to be talking about that, that capital fund, capital reserve fund and prioritizing things, that, that water lead to is what we're thinking.
I will ask him to, to take a look at that before the, yeah, just a matter of time.
I think the reason why I am asking him to look as opposed to either the facilities manager or myself ripping it up and looking is that that's an area of expertise. I would want a person that is familiar with rot to look and say, no, I think you're in a safe place, you can just go ahead and fix the envelope, or to look and say, no, I really do feel like this is a bigger overhaul. And at that point, if that's the case, then yes, we go out for RFPs and get, and get bids on an overhaul and get that ball rolling. What will be interesting is, I'm not sure how we pay for that, just because we're past the point of getting a warrant article created, so...
Well, this is, this is what we want to...
Is this the capital thing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I just, I thought if it was an RFP with a large price tag, it might be, it might be the other, but that's great, thank you for that update.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Would you like me to communicate?
I'll do it. Only because he's so busy right now. But I will, probably can't do it this weekend. I might be able to do it Monday, he's bringing pigs to slaughter, he's not working.
Any other task items?
No.
Okay. Enrollment reports, not much to talk about there, I mean, we did go down three more students, but it is a little bit of a fluctuation.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just as like a heads up that, you know how people like, like to pick apart enrollment reports, like when we're outside appearing and stuff? People are going to fall out of their seats when they see that there's a first grade class with nine, or second grade class with nine kids. It, it, which I, I understand the situation, it's because that's a very small grade level in general to start with and then you have kids move and whatever, right? So, like, I understand, I don't need an explanation. But, just so everyone, just so we're prepared to talk about it, when we do get to the high school class sizes.
Yep.
Because we see then, because that one's a total of 33, then we go right back up to 38, 41, the, the class size is coming behind it, so it's like we're not seeing it on the trend yet. Yeah, it's not trending that way yet, so...
It was definitely a lower year.
Yeah.
And it wasn't probably like that last year for a first grade.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so...
Anyways, I saw that number and I was like, wow.
Well, it is going to be there and it's, all we can say is, um, we're doing this to try to get kids caught up and hopefully testing will prove that out, right?
Yeah, and like I said, that one's kind of like a, that one is drastically lower than every other class.
Right.
So, it's, it's, it's just not consistent with...
I wouldn't want to have a knee-jerk reaction to that because then the next year, we're going to have to hire a back, or, or we're going to have to have this rolling thing that goes every year, because that group's going to third grade next year,
Right, right.
fourth grade the year after, so...
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and ground, that's still the same.
Yeah. And our, our high school level is staying relatively consistent, which is good. DAM update, uh, the Strattford, right now, we're waiting on the final decision from the federal inter-agency review teamwork, known as the IRT. This is chaired by the US Army Corps of Engineers and they expect a decision within a few weeks. That was written on 12/23, so, I mean, it could be coming any day. But basically, what has happened up until this point is that some other committees have met and have said, we're the people they want to get it. It has to go to this next step and once they say yes, which there's no reason to believe that they won't, in fact, there's hope that they'll fill that like $10,000 or so gap between what we asked for and what the grant is worth with some other money, that'd be lovely, then the whole thing 100% is funded. Once we have that approval, then we will get a letter from the state saying, congratulations, you are the recipient, and then we will have to start the process of working with our engineers and the state to come up with a contract that we can all live with. So, we have to make sure that the armed folks are happy with what we're going to do, we have to make sure that the board is happy with what we're going to do and that the engineers can pull off what we promised we're going to do. Sorry about that, my kids are going to bed.
Bedtime babies. So, and we did have, both times, a representative from the US Army Corps of Engineers, they came to the DAM visits, so they are aware of, hopefully, a person that was there would be involved in the approval.
There's no reason to believe that we won't have this money by summer and, and I think as this starts to unfold and we start to see that, that timeline lay, fall into place, we're going to have to have some serious conversations about, is that when the job starts? You know, so just keep that in mind, that we could have construction going on as soon as this summer. May not, I don't, I don't want to make any promises because obviously we have to wait for a timeline that's outside of my control to happen, but I got the impression that, you know, working out that agreement doesn't take a terrible long amount of time and then it's going to go to the, to another state executive council, I think it is, or something like that. It's just the final approval and then after that, it's just a matter of time for the state to issue the money.
And I think that it's weather dependent and they want to get this done before winter.
Well, I, there's a lot of other things that go into it too. I don't know the permitting process is a big thing and that's like out of our hands. I know that there's like more design, like it was, yeah, it wasn't 100% design as well, so...
But that will be paid for out of the grant, because they included that in the grant.
Yeah.
They did?
Right, yeah, well, it's very, very exciting.
The last DAM update is that I had been requested by Debbie to see if the engineer or engineers would be willing to be part of our public budget hearing.
I thought it would be nice to have the engineers, like, remember what they did for us here? Where they have the drawings and they actually showed us things, so that...
So, people know what's going on.
People will know what's going on, because...
Bob Stevens responded with one or both will be at that meeting, so we're set to go with that one attending.
Can they do those drawings, so that we have on the screen, so people can see what we're going to do? Because we really, it's...
You mean the PowerPoint that we had here?
Yeah, yeah, remember they had like the drawings of where they were going to put the road and all those things? Yeah. All right, good.
All right, and then last but not least, the PTO. So, our PTO, I take that back. I said PTO, it does say PTO, but I'm actually, they're, they're not the PTO, they're actually their own committee. I apologize, I, like, I just, in my head, this is Jess, I just threw PTO down.
Oh, the playground committee?
So, yeah, so it's actually the playground committee, I apologize. Uh, the playground committee has met and will be meeting some more. And they're going to be trying to get some fundraising initiatives off the ground. Uh, one was just mentioned to me today by the chair of that playground committee. And, um, like I said to her, we are not micromanaging or regulating that. Their, their committee is not a school committee. Um, so they, they're meeting on their own. Uh, so whatever they want to do, as long as they're open and honest and upfront about it, is great. What they have requested is that as the money comes in, they don't feel comfortable holding it. And they're wondering if the school district would be willing to allow me to set up like a student activity account. Um, and we could put, we'll call it the playground account. It'll be monitored obviously through our, our normal, um, audit process and everything else. But that we could put that money in there. So really, they're just looking to see if the board is willing to allow the school to.
Did you ask, did you check the attorney about that yet?
I haven't, no.
I would check with, uh, check with the attorney and also check with our auditors.
Yeah, so I would.
Can you approve it contingent upon approval from them? Or do you wanna wait for that?
I would wait, I would wait, because I, I, I think it's fuzzy. I mean, like.
Something seems a little like out of place where, like what is the, you know what I mean? Because it's a standalone committee.
It's almost like they might want it to be, uh, a nonprofit, something to set up a nonprofit.
I'm not sure they wanna go through all that. I think we might lose the committee if we.
Yeah. No, we don't.
Kinda push that.
I would just say, I would add.
Like, do we make it then a board committee somehow? A sub-board committee?
If we made it, if we made it a sub-board committee, I don't think it would be an issue to collect that money. But this is not actually associated technically with the school. I don't know.
I just worry about, you have a group of people that have formed a committee. And then we house the funds and then something at some point goes awry and somebody says, somebody's not happy, you know what I mean? Then it's like, it, or it's in limbo, only part of it gets raised. Then what happens to the funds that isn't controlled, who owns the funds?
I would talk to the attorney, I would talk to the attorney, talk to the auditor.
Yeah.
Find out the best, cleanest way to do that, because it, just like we had the lacrosse, remember people wanted to raise money for lacrosse? And they didn't have the lacrosse, we didn't have enough interest, and then people wanted their money back.
Right.
And it was a big.
But it wasn't, it wasn't housed by us, and so we had no control over that money.
Yeah.
That was a very weird situation.
So I think it's better to let the attorney and the auditors tell us what to do.
Has a potential to be a good sized chunk of money too.
We'll let them know.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it's gonna be like a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's a long money.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think it makes sense for us to house it. If people are, are donating to the Strapper Playground and there, somebody will, a business writer.
It's not officially the school. It seems like it's a, it's a community group, right? That's why I would, I, I think it's too complicated.
I, I will, I will send this off to Dean.
I, I think it should be clean for people who wanna make even, just make a donation and then how.
How did they write the check out?
Yeah.
Like who did they write the check?
Just to, to that whole situation. I think just, yeah, guys are just good.
I'll send the situation to Dean and see what his advice is.
Yeah.
Right.
Dean will not steer us wrong.
I mean, I appreciate them doing it, but just we wanna make sure it's done right. Okay. Alrighty, so are we ready for the budget?
What's next?
Okay. Alright, so you put together a booklet.
Unless there's changes, this is the, the structure of what the booklet will look like. There's still a few missing pieces because they haven't gotten it yet. The, uh, cost per.
People.
Per people.
So, alright, one of the things on page three, I think we need to, there's no need to have, in my opinion, have this sped transportation line there. It is confusing, confusion, confusing. Um, it looks like it's an additional line. It's not included in the three hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. I would cross it out, because you already have transportation. You say.
That's homeless transportation.
No, it says vision, OOD, and transportation.
Wait, so is the one ninety-seven included in the three ninety-four?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I was trying to separate it out so people understood that two hundred of the four hundred was just transportation.
Yeah, so if anything, maybe you could put it in parentheses after transportation without the plus sign, if, if we wanted to, to show how much, but I mean.
Or just make it its own bullet point, because that's a big chunk of money.
I, you know what, if you look in the, in the budget, it's very obvious it's the transportation.
You can see, yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, cause we could spell out each item, but.
Please don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. I, I think to, let's just make it simple.
Get rid of.
Just get rid of that.
Get rid of that. It's confusing, cause I thought it was an additional line where it's written. So, okay, there's something else there. Oh, I wrote a line that was right there. Okay. Okay, yes. Um, yeah, one of the things I think would be helpful under that special ed, the transportation, rather than putting, putting the cost, I would put elementary and high school. Because that makes a difference, you know, what it's. Under special ed.
Yeah.
Where it says OOD comma and transportation, I would put and elementary and high school transportation. There's enough room on that line. Yeah.
Um, I have a question in regards to, so technology on page three where it says, the sum of it will be offset by E-rate, but we budget for the full amount. And I know we kinda touched on this before. But, um. So is it not similar to like if we know that we're, like have grant money, like we, we're, we wouldn't budget for something if we expected to purchase something using grant money? Like, that we would have. So do we have to budget the full amount if we know we're, you do have to?
You have to show them what you're budgeting.
Okay.
And then they will approve X amount of it. And in our case, it's up to fifty percent of allowable items. So we have to show them our budget that's been approved.
Okay.
They then look at that, those items and they say, okay, of that, we approve X amount of it.
Isn't it a reimbursement?
And it is. So basically, we would buy.
Yeah.
Right, which we do with grants or, grants are basically a reimbursement too. I didn't know, but it's just, it works differently, so.
Um, I'm just wondering, instead of having that there, which we can just share that, you know, hopefully, we're gonna be getting. Are we getting fifty percent back of the entire technology amount? What would be the amount we would get reimbursed?
Nope. No. What's allowable?
What, what, what is that?
Um, I, I'd have to go back to that technology.
Alright, so if you could just give me that amount, because I have to go through this and I can share that information. But I would like to know why we're, what we are getting with technology.
So you remember this, this package that I gave you?
Yeah.
On it, he said, what was E-rate covered? So for example, Breeze Line School Internet, one gig, uh, G P B P S is, uh, E-rate covers, uh, two thousand five hundred twenty dollars of it. Unification of the SAU and school networks, they would cover five hundred dollars of it. So it's fifty percent is what we're talking about. And then E-rate.
Maybe you just give me a total.
And I gotta get out a calculator.
Well, you don't have to do it now. You just, I, just when we fixed this.
Okay.
Uh, cause we're saying that up to ten thousand dollars will be reimbursed, right? Or something like that?
Something like that.
Okay, so why don't we just put like in parentheses, up to ten thousand dollars will be over, reimbursed. But then I think it's important to say why technology has gone up. So.
As a return.
It's like, what are we using, what, these are things we need.
I think it has, like if we go back and hear the notes of company, it's.
But, you know what I mean, like.
Yeah.
We, we usually give an example of why we're, why the technology has increased. It's increased because we have, um, a need for more Chromebooks for the children or whatever.
That's the most of the, right there.
I, I thought the notes, I thought the notes on that technology budget line mentioned the four year, how we're gonna start that four year Chromebook program and stuff.
That's the majority of it.
Okay.
If that's, I think that's the same stuff you're talking about.
Okay, so I think what we need to have, just because I have to explain it to people, I, I go through this. Is I'd like to say that we, um, should be reimbursed by this E-rate. But we still need an explanation of what E-rate is. What is E-rate again? I need to understand.
I gave it before.
I know, but let's just summarize it. What is E-rate?
It's basically a, uh, a, almost like a, similar to, I would say, a discount purchasing program for, right, they.
Well, it's a grant, yeah.
Yeah, they, they basically reimburse us fifty percent.
They reimburse us. Allowable items.
Allowable items. And it's, our percentage reimbursement rate is determined off of our free and reduced ones.
Our free and reduced.
Is this a federal program?
Yes.
Okay, it's a federal program, a federal grant program for technology. There you go. Okay.
Universal Service Program for Schools and Libraries.
Okay. And it, but it's federal, federally funded. Okay, federally funded.
Through the FCC.
Federally funded reimbursement program, reimbursement program. Are you writing this? Cause we need to fix this. Okay, federally funded, um, reimbursement program for schools and libraries. So we should be reimbursed up to, and then we just need to plug in a number. And then just put a little blurb about what, why has this technology gone up so much? It's because we are following our four-year plan for the, for the, um, Chromebooks, purchasing Chromebooks?
Uh, well, and there's the interactive displays.
Yeah.
Alright.
Which aren't covered by E-rate, but you can't pay for those out of E-rate.
Right, but it, right, but it's part of the, the, if we're just to explain the technology increase. So I think our network infrastructure is also, is a lot of sad end of life at that point.
Can I just ask you all to trust me to come up with a?
Yes, please come up with something. Thank you.
I was gonna say, we're trying, we're trying to create it from a blank page, so.
No, just, just do it. Thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to know what we'll be reimbursed, cause I don't want people to think.
I wonder, I don't know.
It's only four budget lines, so it's easy to look at and see all of it.
Okay.
I will come up with a summary for you.
Okay, and the transportation, I just would like to put that, uh, we had a five percent increase. To add that there. That was a five percent increase for this year for transportation for, through Dale. Okay. There are three teachers, one parent retired, the other one was simply severance and sick by out, okay? Which we are obligated to budget for. And we are obligated to budget for.
Is it, is it worth, I feel like the question's gonna come up, is it worth putting some kind of a note or, put note on homeless transportation about, that it's a required?
I think that's, okay, I'm just gonna go on the question. Summer, that's a just for apparent needs, which is a federally mandated budgeted item. Okay. Okay, this is good. It just, the more information we have, the easier it is to explain. And then.
There's absolutely zero argument.
Yeah, we get to the budget as much. Alright, anybody else who wanna go to the next page? Which is, this is probably gonna be like, most likely one of our last times to do this. Um, I have this. Oh, this was a special ed page. Okay, this is, this is just in the packet.
That's in your packet, yeah. Yeah.
I had a question, because I thought, this is good information.
Yeah, I wanted people to understand, you in particular to understand.
Um, this is good information, however, I would like.
Where are you at for?
Oh, I'm on page forty-two. The special ed, you know, where she goes through the increase.
Page forty-two of your actual board packet. So what was happening was, we've had steady increases over the last couple of years to the cost of special education. And what I wanted the board to understand was what that looks like. So what I did was I went through and I went and recorded the special, cost of special education from twenty twenty-one to present. And talked about the percent increase from year to year. Um, talked about the definition of why we have to provide it. And then down at the bottom, the amount of support that we, increases that we've received. And you can see that our increases in support have not even come close to our increases in costs. And that is true, not just of us, but of every school in the state. It's actually a pretty big deal, just made the newspaper the other day, so. Um, special education is not even close to being fully funded in the state of Hampshire, and it's very problematic.
I have a question, Rob. So I wonder, the, this is, so like where it says we have five hundred twenty-five thousand dollar increase in previous year. Can that align with what's on this page?
No, so I'm including, I'm including OTP, I'm including things that aren't included on that page.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering if you just, the, the five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, you, that's the total increase, but then you didn't subtract the. Then you would subtract the IDEA grant.
Oh, the grant, okay.
And that, is that where you got the, the difference?
All I'm doing with that is saying, this is how much it cost us to provide special ed last year. This is how much it's gonna cost us to provide special ed this year, using all the same information. I'm not taking away anything from down below.
Right, okay.
So we're really, it really costs us over seven hundred thousand dollars, but we have an offset of almost two hundred thousand dollars from grants.
No, it costs us five twenty-five eight oh three eighty-three, but we have an offset of a hundred fifty-nine oh three five eighty-five and forty thousand eight ninety-nine.
Oh, I thought you said you didn't take any offsets, okay.
What I'm saying is, the five twenty-five eight oh three is the actual cost increase for special education from last year to this year. And then you would have to subtract from that this support.
I, I don't know if that, are you sure? Because we don't budget the things that are in IDEA. So if the budget has increased five hundred twenty-four thousand.
Well, it would be the, a special education aid award, I guess, is actually the number that would take away from that, right? Yeah, you write IDEA.
Yeah, so the.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I misspoke. It's the special education aid award that comes back to us as money.
Yeah, so the five hundred twenty-five. Okay, so, okay, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, actually, the total cost is closer to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, sure.
Because.
You're adding the one twenty, one fifty dollars.
We're getting two hundred thousand dollars in aid.
Yeah.
So, and we don't budget that aid amount, right?
Right, but, but we got the aid last year of one sixty-four, so it's really the different, yeah, it's, you can pick it apart of.
Right, well, I'm just saying, it's more, we spend more in special than, than that amount.
Right, you would add it to the three, three point three million instead of the five. That's just the cost of the five twenty-five is just the increase from last year.
Oh, no, you're right. You're right. Oh, you're right. You're right. You're right. Absolutely right.
Right. It's a big number.
No, yeah. So what I, I guess what I'd like to see, cause it says increasing demand and through inflation. I understand inflation. I know that Melissa gave us the numbers. We know what they are in high school, because we have it in our packet. In our budget, it says we are budgeting for thirty identified students at, at Co Brown. But I, does anybody remember what our identified number that we're budgeting for in the elementary school?
The larger cost isn't what we have in our own school, it's the elementary students that we are paying for to go elsewhere. They're the ones that are costing us the most and I can't break that down for you, because it's very identifiable.
It's identifiable. Okay.
You're talking one kid here, one kid there.
Yeah.
People will know who you're talking about.
Well, we always have out of district placements.
We do.
So it's not like that's odd.
Unless we said, unless they could say a total quantity that we have.
I would just like to build the total again. I know you gave us the total for elementary. I just don't remember what it was.
So you're talking in and out of district total number, okay. I can get you in.
Because I just think that's also, when you say increasing demand, you would see, you know, like if we look back five years, oh, you know, there were. Thirty-five identified students and then following years, you know what I mean? Like if, it's the increasing demand for, not just out of district placements. We've always had out of district placements.
We'll have to do it at the high school level too, because we have out of district, I speak of special ed students.
Okay.
So would you say it's fair, just so I understand how these numbers are broken down? So, cause the, the cost increase to special education is five twenty-five over here, and then in our budget drivers is three ninety-four. But is that difference first, taking off the aid awarded? But then also, the rest would be the salary and benefits that would be accounted for in the next line?
Right, so.
Of two sixteen.
Cause it's not, you're correct, it's not going to include salary, it's not gonna include anything that's not listed on that list. So I've broken special ed down, the budget drivers into multiple categories.
Yes.
Thank you.
Where that is, everything that can be called special education is included in that three million, three hundred sixty-one thousand.
Right.
Three hundred million dollars, and that's where we have a thirteen million dollar budget. And that's a very large chunk going to a relatively small population.
Yep.
Okay, alrighty, so let's get back to the packet.
If we go through the, are we gonna go through the budget?
Yeah, we're gonna go through the war, oh, were the war articles, did they all, did everybody contribute to war articles? Did that look fine? Just sometimes you catch something little.
Obviously, Article Two will change depending upon the bottom line of the budget. We have not set certain numbers yet, so that will definitely change. It's on page one and two of the, uh, separate handout.
Okay, yeah, no, I couldn't, I didn't read that.
Just so you know, this is published on our website, so it's, the people can see this, cause it didn't come out as part of the packet.
Okay, so if you, if you see anything, if you haven't, if you see anything over the next week or so, just email for that one. Alright, let's go to, oh, yes, yes.
Um, on article number one, the note should say articles two to four, not two to five.
Oh, thank you. There was five last year. I missed that one. Thank you.
Good for you.
Okay.
Recognize the, Article Four does have fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. There you go.
And actually, I didn't know, that at the bottom where we attest to it, should that be January instead of February? Or is it the earlier budget hearing? Where are you? Where it says they certified it on the whatever day of February twenty twenty-five. Isn't that what we, after the meeting, we go and sign?
There have been times when that, that meeting has been, of course, like a weekly, and something could happen that would make us have to change something.
I think it's, it's good February, right?
Yeah.
There's a train on, so a clip possibly be.
Right, there was.
So maybe we just wanna, when we're all done with this, we might wanna have a page with January and one with February.
Or, or have that, like, we can just run it.
Yeah, yeah, yes, that's even better.
Okay, so if we wanna go to page four, the next, negative budget drivers. The only issue I had with this is a cannon hill dam. It makes it sound as though, I know it's, we took away sixty-one thousand dollars. Because last year was the. as though, I know it's, we took away sixty-one thousand dollars, because last year was the only year we budgeted that amount because of the issues. It's not like that was a, you know, if you, we usually budget six thousand dollars a year for the dam.
Right.
So it was last year because of the issues, um.
It's a good talking point, though, technically, because.
The district is able to, so this would be, I, I wanna just word it so that it says, last year, um, that it was just last year, you can word it so that, that last year we had to make some improvements because of the state recommendation, but now we no longer have to budget for the dam.
So for the dam, we should know whether we're gonna get the grant by the budget agreeing time, right? So we could just get rid of that sixty-one thousand dollars and say, you know, we're saving five hundred thousand dollars over the course of
over many years. Right, like, because we intended to include it until we found out that we, it's most likely we get the money.
Right.
Because the actual driver is now you.
It's the driver, it's the difference from last year. And so last year, we, was the only year, it's not like a historical thing where you can go back and say, oh, every year we've done sixty-one, now we're working down. We used to budget six thousand dollars.
Right, and then we, isn't part of that sixty-one thousand dollars gonna be reimbursed by the grant too, so it wasn't?
I wouldn't count on that.
Okay.
The last year's money we have spent and we put it into that.
We've put it in ours.
Yeah, I think we had to put something in, so we put that in.
We had to show that we had given some blood.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that was the part we did. All right.
So it was brought up, we can just talk about that.
I just want you to work to say that last year, it was, it's not like it's been, every year we spend sixty-one thousand dollars on the dam.
No, we were spending closer to, say, ten, and then last year we bumped it up to sixty-something.
Yeah, well, but to play devil's advocate, we would have been spending more in the future if we hadn't gotten the grant.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I'm just saying.
I mean, it was, it was the start of the trend, but we didn't. Yeah, I guess my thing is, is that the budget driver is always based off of the previous year's budget, not necessarily what it's been historically.
No, you are correct, yeah, but I want to say it was last year we had to put money into it.
Okay, in this year, we don't have to.
But now we do need to because we're going to getting this rate. But it's not like, you know, it's like we've brought our budget down, something that we've been budgeting all along. All right, whatever, okay, let's look at the budget. I'm starting to get tired already.
You have a budget bump.
I know.
So, is the budget that was in our packet the same as the budget that's in this supplemental packet?
No, the bottom line should be the same.
Okay, because I, I have, I made my notes on the one that came in the packet.
I copied and pasted it, so why don't we use the one that you got as a board packet, so they're all on the same page?
Gotcha.
I just gotta get to the right page. All right.
There we go.
I'm there, go ahead.
You wanna start?
I'll start, so right on the first line, teachers' salary, special ed, I'm just looking for clarification. We did that seventy-five percent math, I'm sorry, regular ed, uh, seventy-five percent math interventionist. We did that so that math interventionist isn't, um, like pigeonholed into working with, because the, the part that's being funded, is it the IDEA grant that's funding?
No, it's, um, title.
Yeah.
And, and they're only allowed to work with identified students?
Only people that are titled students.
Oh, okay, so this.
And you'll note that it's not fifty-four, forty-six this year, it's seventy-five twenty-five, because we just don't have enough grant money.
All right. Okay. I'm good.
Okay, so we have, in the next one, it says three paraprofessionals for kindergarten and, and a half for student support. Could you explain what the student support, what is for the half?
Yeah, so the, we have a full-time student support paraprofessional, half is paid from regular ed, half is paid from special ed.
Okay, so it's the person who's running the student support center?
Correct, it's a, it's a funding issue, that's all that note is saying, for funding, yeah. If you look down, if you look down further, you see under special ed, let me get to the page number for you, you'll see the other half, it's on.
Could we possibly, can you add the word center for student support center? Because when I hear student support, I think of a para who's helping the student.
Added.
Okay, thank you. So we eliminated those two lines, unemployment and work and comp. And we've done that in each section because we're going to be just doing it all under the SAU for the entire district.
Daily sub-rate, I thought, are we currently paying a hundred and eight dollars? That's on the fourth line on the first page. Or was that an adjustment?
That was an adjustment, we were paying a hundred, we're paying a hundred, that was the adjustment for next year, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think if you put it back, it would change the actual proposed amount.
No, no, I, I'm not looking to go back to a hundred, I'm kinda, are, did you do comps on the one oh eight, was that?
It's based on two fifty-two, thirty-seven a day, um, long-term, and a BA step one divided by a hundred and eighty-eight for the hundred and eight dollars. That's on that, it's in that note. So in other words, it's based on an actual pay scale. So take BA, teacher's contract, BA step one divided by a hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and you get a hundred and eight dollars a day. So next year, it's that same formula, it'll be one ten a day, that kind of a thing, so we'll adjust in a controlled manner.
Okay, okay, I got you, yeah, all right. Okay, that's all right. Yep, I got you.
Are we ready to go to the next page?
I don't.
Oh, as far as the substitutes go, um, what were, I could try to pull it up, what are we looking at for this year as far as usage?
Not very, it's, we have a lot of money in there right now, it's like, hold on. Oh, it's back, back them out, because this is preparing for the next meeting. But I wanna say we've only spent eleven, twelve thousand dollars so far this year.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's someplace where we could cut some money out, I mean, like, so, last year, it was, we only spent fifty-five out of it. I saw you brought it down to eighty, and since if we could afford to go farther.
So the reason why we budgeted the ninety and only used fifty-five was because we paid a lot of sub-pay out of grants last year. And that reason why we didn't bring it down lower than eighty is we don't know what we're gonna spend this year. But I can tell you in the first half of the year, we haven't spent half of that money. So I would say that that might be that area that you could turn to if for some reason we're forced to cut down the road.
So on the next page, my question is, unless it's, you know, the school, that's not, the public high school that's not Co Brown. Is the tuition nineteen thousand and if we don't pay up to the Co Brown rate, is it a school that's charging nineteen?
So instead of doing the Co Brown rate, this is an area where I was able to trim a few dollars, it's not a lot, but it's a few dollars. Your phone call had said, trim where you can, this is one of the places. There's no public high school out there that charges more than nineteen thousand dollars. Therefore, even if we had all of these kids go to the most expensive of those out of district schools, we would still be okay.
So what's still?
This year, seventeen something.
And West Hoister River?
Uh, eighteen something.
So Co Brown's more than either.
Yeah.
West Hoister River used to be more.
Co Brown's more than all of them, so, once again, um, I, I, and we don't have anybody going to West Hoister River, let's be clear. So we have a few in Dover, we have one at Rochester, and one at Pittsfield, all of them are below nineteen thousand. Now, the assumption is that they won't jump those kinds of dollars for next year, so I mean, once again, it was a place where I thought we could trim a few dollars. If you notice the bottom line, we're below four percent again.
Below five, right?
I'm sorry, below five percent, sorry, below five percent. I know, but we were, in the last meeting, we were above five, and so I was able to trim here, trim there, I got us below five, so.
Great. All right, so where, what else?
So, that same page, supplies, general, regular ed, that's eleven hundred fifty-six ten oh oh eight. Is this the line where we pay for every notebook and pencil?
That's the big one.
Pen for the students, and I'm not saying I wanna do it, but I've, that's a place where we could do some trimming if, if we have to trim the budget.
I guess, yeah, I was just curious, but I, I asked about it, I remember asking about it last budget season, because it had jumped, jumped up to thirty, you know, or jumping up to thirty-four, five. So I just, just, I guess the other.
The bottled water and the copy paper, um, every year it goes up and it's a big chunk of money. So that is where a lot of that inflation is coming from, and we have not yet come up with a solution to the bottled water. We did do, last year, I think it was you that had asked, is there a cheaper place? We actually, well, we did research, and there really isn't. I can actually go and get the bottle myself from like a Home Depot or a Lowe's, and it's still more expensive than what we're getting.
So when you say bottled water, you're talking about for?
We have bubblers in multiple parts of the school, yeah.
What's the total cost for the bubblers?
Well, I, I, paper and bottled water come from the same company, so together it's ten thousand, I don't have the breakdown in front of me.
I would be, I would, I would be, if you wouldn't mind us breaking down, what, you should, I would just be curious.
Oh, in the manifest. Because I understand the SAU needing water, because they don't really have kitchens, you know what I mean? You don't water factories and stuff like that. But why do we need bottled water in other parts of the building?
It's for the quality of the drinking water.
Okay.
And that's kind of, yeah, where like I come back to, I'd be curious what that number is that we spend on bottled water? And if we look at how much we spend every year on bottled water, what could we do to our water system to bring it up to quality where we don't have to be buying bottled water?
Well, I mean, the SAU, that building, it doesn't have, they need bottled water.
Well, it's, that's, I agree, yes.
But, like, the kids drink out of the water fountains, or they bring their own water, right? The kids aren't using these, are they?
We have used them on many occasions for our students.
For the bubblers?
We've had to. Even, even our bubblers have not been great, we've had kitchen issues. We were, we were boiling pasta in bottled water for months this year, because our water couldn't be seen through.
Okay.
Once again, the situation's better now, but I would still argue, I don't think we would wanna cut that until we see a reliable water system. And we have not seen that since I've been here.
Yes, I, like, yeah, I would just be curious, like, how, what that, like, how, what percentage of the ten thousand is paper versus water, that's all. That, yeah, that's just.
All righty, anybody else have anything on that page?
Um, can you just give a breakdown for the classroom textbooks, third line from the bottom? So, I know, obviously, like, basically, which materials are being purchased, where we're at in that? I know we started a new program for the middle school last year, I guess I had thought that we had already purchased what we needed for the middle school, but maybe we.
Well, they're consumables.
They're, they are like, soft cover, tear out, no, no.
I just love how you guys answer the questions after you ask them, without waiting for me to answer them.
We're just five to eight math, and I thought I-ready was computer-based, so.
Yes, and so eventually, we'll probably want to change the name of that line, because that is your I-ready cost for five to eight. And that is your maximum cost, depending upon which curriculum you choose. So there are two curriculums, that is the price of the higher cost curriculum. So once again, we had to budget for the worst case, best case, I'm not sure how to say that one, actually.
So that, that could be considered, the ten K is like, with the annual I-ready software cost, okay.
But it includes other, that's why I'm saying, I think at some point, we'll probably wanna relabel the line to being math curriculum or something.
No, 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 that's fine, I was just.
Because that, that line right now, it, it implies that it's covering any sort of curriculum textbook, but the reality is, right now, that line is strictly math.
Okay.
So, did they choose, they haven't chosen yet what that's for?
No, the plan is to come to this, this, later this winter, spring, I can't remember, I think it's March or April, to provide a presentation to the board, um, Rob's gonna be involved, I think, at that point as well, but definitely Natalie's all over this. We actually just talked about it in leadership yesterday.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, how about the next page?
The twenty percent increase for the salaries for the special ed teachers, is that solely because of where people landed on steps that were higher? Or were there increases in position?
No, we, we got a couple of extremely experienced special ed teachers.
Which is great, just more so that when people ask, we can answer that.
And in fact, that was higher, it's gone down because of a recent change.
So it's based on current?
It's based on our current people, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the Co Brown paras, that increase is based on our, um, our agreement with Co Brown?
It's based on need at Co Brown for paraprofessionals, and you can see a six percent increase in the cost.
That, so, but the six percent.
But it went down overall, if you noticed, by thirty point nine percent, because instead of three point five paraprofessionals, we only need two point five paraprofessionals.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is, the six percent increase, we have no control over, that's what I'm trying to say.
Control over.
So, so that is, um, per CBNA agreement, if we can add that, because that is, we have no control over the increase, they decide to give the paras.
That's true of all CBNA numbers, though.
Yeah.
They're all because of the.
Not CBNA, CB.
No, it is CBNA.
CBNA, yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying, all lines that are CBNA are because of the agreement.
Right, it's just when you see the other paras above it, and then you see.
I'll say, six percent increase per CBNA contract.
So.
Yeah.
The line above it, is that where that halftime?
Correct.
Student support center?
So that's where, why you have three point five FTEs?
Okay, so that is three pairs, and maybe we should put point five, um, student support center.
Okay, so represents twenty-one full-time pairs plus two point five FTEs, uh, and one point five student support. Support center.
The more information we have here, the easier it is to answer questions.
Point five. Oh, I said one point five.
Then we don't have the deer in the headlights. What was that?
Debbie, could you open public comments?
Oh, gosh.
I don't think we did.
Public comments?
I don't know, I'm gonna, okay.
We'll leave public comments open for thirty minutes?
Part of the time.
Eight-ten.
I told you if we couldn't towards the meeting, because we.
Oh, my God.
I don't know. What else is new?
Okay, um, are we, we're on page twenty-two, I have just one thing on page twenty-three when we get to.
Twenty-three, you said?
Yeah, so twenty-three, just, it's just clarifying, clarifying question, so, middle of the page, elementary software for special education, fifty-six fifty, um, the jump in, for five thousand dollars. And I was just curious, bulk of it said goal book, what, what is that?
Yeah, so, I would need Melissa here to give you the exact explanation, but in a nutshell, I can give it to you. So our special educators have to write appropriate goals for every one of their special ed students, uh, when they're writing IEPs. And writing goals that are appropriate and acceptable can be challenging. And this is a tool that helps ensure that we meet, we can check off all the boxes for, for goals. We, we know that the goals are sound, we know that they're appropriate, we know that they meet the letter of the law. And it will help, not only with special education, but it can help with five oh fours as well. So we can, they can, it can really help us in designing any sort of goal that we have to design. So Melissa felt strongly, particularly with our relatively rookie crew, um, that we needed to have this extra support.
Right.
Go ahead, guys, good.
And then, um, sorry, I'm not trying to pick everything apart, it's just the first time I've really gone through everything line by line. So just two below that, the new furniture for special education, can you just like give us what the partitions are?
So we took the room that used to be the health room, and we turned that into two sets of grade levels, five, six, and seven, eight. And it's a very large room, and it really needs to be separated with actual partitions. We had some makeshift stuff in there this year, we're getting by, but it's really rough, and, and probably at some point it will fall apart. So this, the idea here is to actually get some real partitions that will actually be able to separate that into two much more functional private locations.
All right, let's go to the next page.
The, um, salaries for co-curricular, I mean, I believe that, are those per CBA? I was just curious how we, like, last year we went up twelve hundred, and this year we went down a thousand.
I was wondering why we went down too, because we, we follow.
And I didn't compare to this year's budget, to see what the notes said.
All I did was, all I did was add them up.
Okay.
So.
Okay, no, that's fine, we didn't leave anything out.
I, I have to recheck, I mean, all I can tell you is I don't believe so.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, I was.
I will make a note to get my calculator out and redo it.
Right, those are CPA things, right?
Change them, yeah.
So.
So, I have a question about the environmental camp. I was surprised that it went down.
We were not budgeting properly.
Okay.
You can actually see the breakdown, and I did recheck that one recently, because I had to make sure that I, when I saw the two forty a night times three nights and all that kind of jazz, I had to remember how it all works. So when I did that, I said, you know what, I'm just gonna recalculate this to make sure I did the number right, and I did. So that is accurate.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, let's.
I do have it, I, I just added them all up, Rob, and I do have it come out to twelve thousand four hundred still for that salaries co-curricular line. If you just wanna save yourself the trouble of doing it again.
I think those one of the positions were not analyzing.
Okay, yeah, you just, that's fine.
Well, I'd have to go back and double check it.
Okay.
I have a note to check it, I will.
Okay, okay.
All right, so, the next page.
I had a question on this page that wasn't necessarily relevant to this year, um, but for the truant officer where the actuals for twenty-three, twenty-four was double, is that because maybe somebody wasn't paid properly the prior year? Okay, I assume so.
That was exactly what happened.
Yeah.
So, under, um, repairs, maintenance, athletics.
What page are you on?
The next page, uh.
Let's get it, uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I don't know what Jeff has included in there, but we know what, that the girls volleyball net is ripped. We were just talking about that in our meeting, so I'm not sure.
All I can see is net soccer and basketball.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I don't see volleyball nets or basketball. I just think that, I, I just want Jeff to look to see if he has budgeted, well, I see supplies down there under athletics.
Has it happened recently?
No, it's, it all season, I think the volleyball net was ripped, you might have seen it.
I was.
I guess what I'm asking is, has it happened since September that this has become a known item, because he did his budget in September?
Uh, it might, it actually might have been because the volleyball season was like September to October, so.
So, I will have him reevaluate to see if six hundred is still enough.
It may be under supplies.
Maybe, I'll.
So I just wanna make sure that he's thinking about this, we just went through the surveys and people have talked about the ripped volleyball net.
Does it need repair or replacement?
It needs to be replaced.
Replace, I was, just wanted to write the right word.
So it might be under supplies.
It might be, I will check with him.
Thank you. Okay, alrighty, let's, we're going to the next page?
Yep. Um, I was curious on the software for counseling, or is there new software or new programs that are?
Yeah, so we don't have a soft, we don't have a, uh, school counseling software program. So, when we hired our two new school counselors, they were very clear that there needs to be one. That it was haphazard, kind of shoot from the hip kind of a situation going on, and that we needed to bring something in more official so that we're following something appropriate. And so that's what's budgeted in here, um, so, yeah.
And I'm sure that they have worked with this before.
They have, at least one has worked with it before, I think maybe both of them have, and then also Natalie had, uh, strong opinions on this as well, so.
Okay, anything else on that page? Okay, let's go to the next page. Again, that, those two lines, the workers' compensation unemployment eliminated because it's all in the SAU. Okay, so you were talking about, that's the BCBA. So that's under contracted services, so that really is a behavior consultant, right?
This is the person that we need to provide a service to a student is all I can tell you intelligently. This is a Melissa thing, you've asked me on multiple occasions, so I've gone back a couple of times. She has re-verified that this is definitely a need. If we wanted more, a, a greater level of description of that, I'd have to invite her back. Well, BCBA's, that's what they offer.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so that must be, so it's not actually the psychologist, it's a.
Behavior is probably like the, the category that it follows.
Right, 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 so that's, because the student evaluation is above it, so when you were talking about that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't looking, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that page? Okay, next page. It's all based on, a lot of it is based on IP needs, contracted services, all of the contracted services are through Strafford Learning Center?
I wouldn't wanna say all, I would say the vast majority, but I can't say all.
Which one is it?
I don't know for sure, but I know there's other manifests too, I don't think it's that. Um, and I just wanted to mention something that we had briefly talked about in non-public, but I just wanted to mention it again in public. The contracted services for OT, I had asked about the, at what point do we say that's something that we bring in-house rather than contracted services? And Rob explained that it's a, a sort of a fluctuating item in that, for now, we're at a point where it's best to leave it as contracted service, so, right.
Based on student needs, so every year it will change. Okay, next. Page. All right. Any questions on the next page? Alrighty.
Are we on thirty-one or thirty?
Um, twenty-nine.
No.
Now we're on thirty, all right, now we're going to thirty, okay. Okay, so, I just, I know that, um, just the big increase in the technology, I know we list all the things we're using it for, but what is the big thing that's causing that increase?
The contracted services?
No, yes, for the technology.
Yeah, cuz I get like, um, like, stuff that's like actual hardware or whatnot, but yeah, the contracted services part, I wasn't sure.
So, one of the lines, and I think it might be this one, Rob Stacy had not budgeted enough last year, uh, and it was discovered by Jay that it's not, it's, it's under by quite a bit, like seven or eight thousand dollars under. We're gonna be fine, but it has to be put in there.
Okay, so if you look at the actuals, yes, look at the actuals.
Last year should have been higher.
So, it, our actual for forty-eight thousand, we budgeted, um.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, or the year before.
That was right, that's not the current year.
Yeah, the year before.
Right, and when he budgeted twenty-eight, which is the adopted number, that should have been higher, and it just wasn't.
Okay, so the line is adjusted to reflect the actuals.
Do you want that in there?
Sure. All right, let's look at the next page, thirty-one, anything on thirty-one? Anyone? Anyone? I don't know what, maybe that's. I'm starting to.
Yeah.
What time is it?
Twenty-two.
Right about halfway down the page, the school board expenses.
Yep.
The nine hundred dollar retirement, is that retirement gifts?
So you have retirement, and then you have graduation gifts, so retirement of teachers or staff?
Yes, we, it is gifts.
It, okay.
Yeah, cuz we, we used to do the chairs, but now.
You want the word gift in there?
Yes, please. Then the grad gifts are for the eighth graders.
Okay. And we can go to the next page, thirty-two. Okay, you know, we kept talking about the district unemployment and the district workers' compensation. So this is based on all, in the notes, based on all full-time employees in the district, can we just add that? I know it says district.
Yeah, district, you got it, send that.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty.
The, um, the superintendent business manager salary, that it's split, split salary with benefit and benefits with the school. Maybe just put that it's fifty percent, just so, just so, um, that it's fifty percent of the total. That's a little bit more clear if anybody has a question.
Okay, next page. Thirty-three.
Well, I have one more on that page.
Okay.
So the new, just below the superintendent salary line is the admin assistant HR salary. It looks like a new position, I know you classified that, was that the old bookkeeper position? And did that bookkeeper position go away here somewhere?
Yeah.
It's in the business department, business office.
Okay, I missed it when I was looking.
So, so should we put, um, a note, I know what Eric is saying, cuz I thought the same thing, people are gonna say, oh, we added a, we added another position to that thing.
Not a new position, or. Yeah, that's what I'm.
Should've been from business office.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it.
Okay. All right, next page. Okay, about thirty-four.
I'll put fifty, fifty, again.
Okay. Ready, next page, thirty-five.
Do you want me to make a note that says shifted a position to the SAU?
Uh, where do we have that?
The first line under business office, salaries, business office, that's where the two positions are.
Oh, yes, yes, perfect, yes.
Um, so on thirty-five, and I guess continuing on, can you just give us, um, I guess a summary of the doll, how the dollars worked out for the facilities positions? I see that we removed sixty-seven. But then we're adding in eighty-five, and then also twenty-one for health insurance below?
Well, the, so our current facilities manager doesn't take health insurance, he has to buy it. So when we budget for a position that we don't know.
Right.
We budget a two-person plan, that's why the health insurance won't apply that much. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Second part of this is that we were already up, I don't remember the exact amount, I have to look back in a previous version of this, for custodians because of the pay increases, but what's been added into here that created such a large increase was the maintenance position for twenty-five dollars an hour. So it's a full time, so that'd be twenty-five dollars an hour times eight hours a day times, uh, two hundred and sixty days a year. So whatever, I can.
Was that like, didn't we say it was like fifty-six thousand or something? I thought I remembered that.
I will give you a number in just a moment. Fifty-two thousand dollars.
Fifty-two, okay.
And once again, that's a budgeted number, I don't know it yet because we haven't hired it yet, so.
So you're saying thirty-two thousand dollars is the difference, what, what is that?
Let me look back on a previous, what we have there. Let's see. We had a thirty-two point one percent increase or a thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ten dollar increase. And that was once again based on what we have for custodial staff as well as, um.
The increases for those people.
Yeah, and, and I believe that was very minorly impacted by switching from Mark, who resigned, to our new custodian because it's a slightly lower rate because he doesn't have the time. But it's, with custodians, it's, it's a relatively small amount of difference. But that's represented in that as well, that's reflective of that.
Eric, we were discussing, um, the new physician management, and you talked about a range. Would you wanna do in the middle of the range to budget, like, so instead of doing twenty-five dollars an hour, budget twenty-eight? So it's like the range of twenty-five to thirty or something, I don't know what you meant by that.
I don't, I wanna make it like, kinda like how we have the, how we have the part-time custodians eighteen to twenty. I was thinking like a twenty-five to twenty-eight or something, but I wanted to make sure that, that that range was appropriate for that, for that position.
So once again, the problem with your range idea with that, so the range idea with the custodians, I have custodians, I have known numbers. I've applied that new number to them. Okay, so the eighteen to twenty has been applied to the actual beings. I don't know what we're gonna hire, so what I think Debbie is implying is that you're gonna have to give me a number to budget, cuz right now I'm budgeting twenty-five.
I do it in the range. So if you wanted to say, if you're saying twenty-five to twenty-eight, then do like twenty-six fifty or something, if that's the range you're thinking of.
I don't know what, I don't know how to intelligently base what I'm thinking yet without knowing.
Well, just change the rate from twenty-five to.
How about twenty-seven? Twenty-seven times eight times two sixty would be fifty-six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars minus fifty-two thousand.
If you're doing that, also our health insurance, if it's a family plan, we're paying at least, it's like twenty thousand dollars that we would be paying. So you take that as a benefit, and then we also, for someone who is not certified, it's a New Hampshire retirement, we have to pay almost fourteen percent to New Hampshire retirement, which not a lot of jobs give you retirement anymore unless you work in state.
It's less now, it went down, it was twelve point something.
Twelve point something, so almost thirteen percent. So, those are benefits that, you know, if you worked for someplace else, you're not gonna get that much usually, I don't know if you do that.
The, the average in New Hampshire for facility maintenance signature is twenty-two dollars an hour.
Twenty-two?
Allegedly per the influence.
I think, I think, uh.
I think the range of.
Giving a range, and if you were to be able to get somebody very experienced, then you can, you have the ability to pay them more, but.
Plus, they were talking to me about what they're looking for, and I don't think it's a basic level, they're, they're looking for somebody that's got some real skill.
If we want people to be able to maintain and repair things.
Correct.
You know, that, I think that will save us in the long run.
In the end, that saves us money, right?
Yeah.
Not having somebody.
We were, for, for a perfect example, we were talking about someone who can like, change out a door, re-side the garage.
Take off the trim of the, of that building, the lean tube, and hook the safety.
Yeah.
But we, we realize that's a much bigger project, so I mean, once again, the things you were talking about today, like, we have a doorknob that's broken.
Right.
Do we have to call a locksmith? I think the answer is no, I think that, that's something that we would want that person to go say, yep, I'll get that lock changed out for you. Like you just mentioned, the door and the siding on the garage, that's a, I think, a very simple project for somebody that should be able to handle here in-house.
And also, I think, being able to start somebody at a certain day and say, you know what, if you prove yourself in six months, we'll move you up to the other one. Because that, if somebody is valuable and they're able to save us money by repairing things.
Cuz we, we know we have those things come up all the time by looking at the manifest, they will start saving us money, you, you know, if, if, it'll start to offset that.
Right.
Pretty quickly.
Alrighty, anybody else on that page?
Fifty-seven is what I just told you numbers for, you want to do something else.
And we said, what did we say, twenty-seven?
I'm sorry, uh, what did I just say, I meant to say twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Fifty, fifty.
Woo, sorry about that, he was like, probably like, what?
I think the range, if.
I'll take that job.
I think the range, if we want to say, you know, depending on.
Sure, sure, but I have to budget for something, so we'll budget for a number, twenty-seven, but we'll recognize that's not. It'll be a range that you guys put it to the job description form.
But that would make the entry approximately.
I just said it was four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
There's your savings that you tried to save us. All right. Okay, here are we, thirty-six. Okay.
So just recognize a couple of these other lines will be affected now, VICA will go up and the retirement will go up.
Yeah, so you see these repair district ride equipment. All these repairs, repairs, plumbing, electrical, so many repairs.
Does the rubbish removal include the recycling, or is that a separate?
It includes, so all of our rubbish, all three dumpsters right now are covered by our line. Twelve thousand is not enough to cover three dumpsters, I think it's a little over twelve thousand. But once again, our goal is here in the next month or two to get down to the two. And at that point, it drops off to eight thousand something, which would mean that we would actually have some fun balance there.
What, why do we have on the dam? What, why do we have on the damn thing, second year dam removal, sixty thousand in the note?
I was high on.
Where are we at?
The bottom.
Bottom line.
Of thirty-six.
Annual dam registration, seven fifty, ongoing dam maintenance, but, yeah, we don't need any of that anymore, yeah, I'll just, uh, annual dam registration. I didn't adjust the note after we, we called that, so, yeah, we'll just say annual dam registration, seven fifty, because we still are gonna most likely have to pay that for at least one more year.
Okay. Alrighty, let's go to the next page. So the electric bill, how's, our electric has, has gone down twenty percent, yes? No, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I'm sorry.
Am I electric expert? No.
So when we, you remember last year, we couldn't figure out why our electric bill was high, so we artificially padded the heck out of it to make sure we didn't go negative. This is a fairly decent representation of where we think we're actually at. Uh, plus a little bit of an increase for the unknown for next year, right, so. It's down by almost twenty thousand dollars, because last year we were up by twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars. And yes, there's been a price increase, but at the same time, it's nowhere near what we budgeted last year, so no. Electric, and if anybody asks that, electric consumption has not gone down, we just finally.
Figured out.
I think we all still believe it was the meter, but I, I've never been able to convince the electric company of that.
That was a big, do you remember the discussion about that at the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I think we really need to, so, why don't we put something adjusted to actuals?
You got it.
Okay.
How long are we locked, remember we locked in with that company for?
Do you remember, Jess?
Four years, I think.
Was it four?
Four, I think it was four years, I think if you broke the contract before four years, you have to pay a penalty.
Okay.
I think it's four years. And that was probably three years ago.
I was gonna say, you did it before I, you did it just before I got.
It was September of, it was open house of twenty-two.
We were, we were, we were in a meeting in.
The office.
Open house?
It was the open house.
The open house, and we had to have this little board meeting.
It's probably two and a half.
Replace.
Close sixty.
To a phone on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alrighty, um. What else, anything else on that page?
It's like propane might be too high, but we just don't know, and I, up until December, I would have thought, oh my gosh.
Yeah, now it's.
But now it's like, oh my gosh, we're probably cranking through propane, so.
Oh, it's just so cold.
So it is, you can see from a couple of years ago, it was forty thousand, then it was thirty-one, eight.
We have a really good rate though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So once again, I, I went with thirty-seven, I, just, all I can do is cross my fingers and hope that it's enough, it's really gonna depend on the nature of the winter zone.
Alright. So did we budget enough for the snow plowing?
Hard to say.
Afterwards, we just have a discussion about the sanding.
Notice I have sand and salt for six thousand.
Yeah, we're almost there.
So, not just for sand and salt, that actually includes a little bit of plowing.
Correct.
So.
So that looks good?
I, it's hard to say.
I mean, we're almost halfway through, Jane, we're out, so you need to.
Well, just look at the actuals, the actuals, I know we want to keep the other job, but we also want to be realistic, the actuals.
Well, that was a different company.
Yeah.
Oh, that was a different company, okay.
We didn't have the regulation on plowing, so that's why I did bring it down.
Now we just have that, not regulation on sanding.
Well, I, I, I think, once again, it's hard to say, what I'd like to do is reach out to the company and just chat about it.
Yeah, I know, that's fair.
Okay, so. Anything else on that page? Good? Alrighty, we're getting near the end here, okay. Next page, so we have the. Transportation. Actually, the high school transportation, we're at five point three or something.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, one of the biggest ticket items in the whole budget is high school, special education, transportation. I assume that there's a significant amount that's asked, that could be out of district, and that's why, I mean, oh, we obviously don't need identifying information, but.
It's based on IEP.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that wasn't even what you had on this budget driver, you had a hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Because the elementary went down, so it's the net.
Oh, it's the net, you're right, okay.
No, I saw that.
No, you're right, you're right. Yep, okay. Alrighty, uh, homeless transportation, we talked about that. Um.
So, the last line that, ready, um, maintenance, new equipment, food service. We have a thousand budgeted for the range cleaning. Looks like in twenty-three, twenty-four, we paid twenty-one thousand on that line, is that the dishwasher?
Yeah.
Okay, so, there's nothing else, there's, there's, that's not like, something could be hiding on that line that we could get hammered with.
But that money came out of the surplus that was in there, so it didn't really impact our budget for the dishwasher.
It's just where it has to show.
Right, yeah, okay.
Greg, Greg, help us with that.
Okay. Alrighty, so next page, we're at our grand total here. Where we are Rob, well, then we just increased it a little bit.
A couple thousand.
Yeah, so I don't know if we're gonna be at five percent, but closer to five percent than we were. And now we also have to talk about the increases for non-CBA staff. Well, question for you. Do you, would you recommend the same increase for all non-CBA employees, or do you have any you want different, different increases?
So the, you can definitely go about it in, in one of two ways, I mean, obviously, what you're just discussing. Of giving different amounts is based on usually two things, one, you look at your people that make relatively little money. And you say, well, three percent doesn't increase them by that much, so, in this particular case, we'd be talking about our administrative assistants. At thirty-six thousand, you give them a three, custodians are already a separate item that we've already addressed. We already put that into the budget for eighteen to twenty versus seventeen to nineteen, so you're not worrying about that, they're not even on the chart.
Okay, so they would not be on there, okay.
They're not part of this, this uh, thing that's already programmed in. And so, and once again, right now, you'd be talking about our administrative assistants at thirty-six thousand, if you give them a three percent pay raise relatively tiny, right? So that would be where you could say, well, let's give them five percent, and we'll give others that make more money, three percent or two percent. That's one way to go about it, another way to go about it is you can talk about, um, about tying it to evaluations, right? It's like, did you earn a higher percentage rate? We don't have that system built. So if we want to go down that road, it would take time for me to develop it, but it's something I could have in place starting July one, if we wanted that. Um, but we want a budget for the highest possible, right? So that would be where you would say, okay, what's the most that a person can earn under that system? You know, is it five percent, is it three percent, whatever, and then I'd have to budget for that highest amount, because everybody should have the opportunity to achieve that if they truly want. Once again, that system doesn't exist right now. Then the last way is just to say everybody gets three percent, the problem with that, yet, or, I'm using as an example, obviously, you're gonna tell me the percent. Everybody just gets a, a level one percent, the problem with that, once again, is that the people that make more money get a better pay raise. Is ultimately comes down, now, once again, it's three percent of their pay, so, you know, that, that's consistent, but the dollar values could be quite dr-. Especially when you're talking about a pay range from thirty-six all the way up to nine, right, that's, that's quite the range of salaries. So it's, it's really up to the board what your pleasure is, um, I think if I was to make a recommendation, I'd want to make sure my administrative assistants stay happy. I would love to see them maybe get a little bit more than what the other group gets, we did that last year, though. So you may say, let's take a break from it this year, I don't know, because remember last year went up quite significantly. Um, but that, it was definitely worth it, and we had to have that to keep our administrative assistants from wanting to leave us. So I think it's important to just kind of balance that out, so.
So we can either, uh, because when we talk about compensation, we can have that discussion in public if we want, or we can have it. We can hold off and go through the rest of the packet, it's up to wherever people want to do.
I, I feel like that's a brief non-public, I don't know how anybody else feels.
I mean, yeah, it's probably easier to have it in public and summarize what we can in public afterwards. I would just, I would just, I get really nervous about.
Okay.
Because we're such a small district.
You can identify.
That, and things are very identifiable in any conversation you have.
Okay, so let's just.
If you're gonna go with a flat rate, then I think that could be public, but if you're going to specify different rates for different people.
Okay.
Well, eventually, it would have to be a public motion, right? But that gives you the freedom to talk openly before you make that decision.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the next part of our packet and.
Can I have one budget question?
Sure.
Um, page thirty-one, okay, under the school board acceptance, what happened on the page?
Give me a second, almost there. School board expenses, check.
I see in the note that it says annual report, is that reflective of the invoice that we got last year? Because I thought we were surprised by how much we were charged for the printing of this.
Yes, remember, that was so expensive, Rob, the annual report.
I know it's more than that, but I couldn't, I don't know.
Sure, I, so if you recall, um, last year, we went to a company. That charged a lot of money because we weren't, uh, I'm talking, I, it was, might even, about two years ago. We went to a company that cost us a lot of money, what this includes is the annual report and the AccuVote, the twenty-five hundred is what we were billed by the town.
Okay.
It was a lot less expensive than the previous year, because we're part of a book that already exists, they just charge us for the pages that we put into it.
Okay.
Which, that's how much it costs.
Some of my thought was more that it fits something.
Right.
No, that's, that's what it cost, it was a couple, so I'm thinking it was two, because last year was obviously that. So it was two years ago, I went to a private company, we were running out of time.
Yep.
And I was gonna try and use our copier, but our copier was not up to the day's.
Right, no, I remember that, okay, just on the time.
Okay, so, what else do we need to go through? If we want to budget, if we want to go through this packet, just so Rob can make corrections if you say it's wrong before this meeting. Um, alright, so the next thing we have on page thirty-eight of the packet he gave us is the estimated revenue.
And that's based on the current number, the law you are, so obviously, that will change depending on the outcome of this meeting.
Right? I did ask Rob. To. To calculate the swept amount, that is, you could, you could see that right now, the state education tax. The one million one hundred eighty-six thousand, that number, so what it is per thousand, because, what was it, one sixty-three?
It was like a dollar sixty-two, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, so it's just good to know that, um.
If you ever want to figure it out.
We used to have, we used to have it on here.
Where is it?
It's not, it, it's, the total is on there.
This is a multi-year document that I go off of, so, it wasn't on there since.
It hasn't been on it for the past couple of years, but we used to have it on here, so I asked Rob if he knew the swept.
And I was like, well, I've never been asked that, but it's easy to calculate.
And he did calculate it for us, and he showed me the calculation, I'm just gonna go and look at what he said. Um, where are we?
You take the one-one-eight-six-four-eight-six and divide it by the equalized value of seven-two-nine-four-five-oh-one-hundred, and then multiply it by a thousand, that's how you get the number.
So it's an additional one dollar and sixty-three cents per thousand, and then it, it tells you what the additional amount is for the values of the home. For your home, you know, like if you have a four to fifty thousand dollar home, it's another seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. It just takes that number, that is another, that is part of.
Does it make sense to put it here?
I think it's a good idea, because it's very transparent, people get their tax bill, some people don't understand, there's two education tax bills. The local and then it's the swept, the statewide educational tax, which is what the, um, state calculates out of that.
Yeah, well, it's like, it shows like twenty-twenty-fourth tax rate, like a dollar seventy-four last year.
Yeah, on page forty.
It does have last year's swept, okay. So this year is gonna be at a dollar sixty-three. Well, I'm trusting you, if you did that right.
Yeah, no, it, the calculation's right, but once again, as we've said in previous meetings.
Is this the one I asked you to correct, did you correct it?
I didn't, well, I didn't, the package already printed.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I corrected it on the screen.
Page thirty-nine, um, it's the, it's projected two thousand twenty-five tax rate.
Twenty-four went to twenty-five and twenty-three went to twenty-four. On page thirty-nine, the years.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already been fixed.
Okay.
Did we ever talk about, should we increase the home values, because a lot of people come from.
It's up to you.
I know, we never, I mean, really, I would love to find out.
I can make whatever you want.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is transferred, I buy one, each one of my kids.
So what if I drop a hundred and fifty and add a five fifty?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So I'd go two fifty to five fifty?
Yeah.
I would.
Unless people just take the one fifty.
I would leave the one fifty and just add the five fifty.
Yeah, I, exactly, because you, people use that as a multiple.
Yeah.
True, you know, um.
You got it, so I'll leave the one fifty and add a five fifty on it.
Yes, thank you.
And then I'll add to the bottom of that page the swept information, which you were just.
Thank you so much for doing that, that's great. It's just less things we have to explain when they can see it and calculate, you know, it's already calculated. Um, and then I did look, this is just for your own information, I was looking at last year's, this is why I didn't want to give up my whole thing last year. Because I wanted to compare it, I know, it's like, why do you like this, I can't help myself. Um, so, the tax revenue, it's, I mean, our tax, um, per thousand. In twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, it was ten dollars and ninety-two cents, it ended up being. This was after we gave back money, so it was estimated, it was gonna be twelve dollars and thirty-six cents, and we, we gave back money, that was the big surplus we returned. It ended up being ten dollars and ninety-two cents, and then you can see the calculation here. Last, in two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, we estimated it was gonna be twelve dollars and six cents, and it actually ended up being eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. We returned money, so, um, we were pretty close last year, it was twelve forty-eight, it ended up being twelve oh-five. So this year is thirteen forty-eight, and depending on if we return anything, that's what it would offset.
So recall, at some point in time, I, I did a ten-year analysis, and we were higher than thirteen in the past. But you said to me, you, but that's what I was gonna say, Debbie told me that reassessment is what then brought that number back down.
Right.
And now we're slowly working back up, and at some point, there'll be a reassessment, and that number will drop again, so. Uh, I just wanted to make sure you knew that this is not the first time people have seen thirteen dollars and something cents per thousand.
Yeah, yeah, it's more like what their total tax bill looks like.
What the houses like, yeah. Yes, yeah.
I, believe me, I, I live in Concord, guys, I understand. We're building a new middle school, they're.
Oh, Manchester, people go crazy in Manchester right now, you reading that? Okay, alrighty, um. Let's go to the next page, the tax rate breakdown. Alright, so, there's nothing, this is just, is, comes from our.
That's the next two pages, all the way through page forty-three.
Alright, so that's done.
Page forty-four is the next, oh, that's block two, I can't change that out.
Okay, so we have those two.
I will point out on that, though, because you guys have talked a couple of times, what do we want to set the IMB as kind of a minimum dollar value?
Yeah.
We're currently at, what is it, two fifty-five and some change?
Mm-hmm.
So that, that is, at some point, gotta be part of the conversation, especially when we get to the annual meeting, where you're talking about increasing it by fifty thousand. For that very reason, that we want to spend some of that money to fix some stuff, so I just wanted to make sure you're not letting that out of sight.
So maybe we can talk about that at our next meeting, you know, like.
Yeah, we just, we're trying to forecast and think about what the most expensive emerging repair could be.
Right.
Yeah.
Come up like an establishment, somewhat comfortable in a, in a.
Right.
Yeah, because we were thinking the bleach field cost a hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago.
Right.
We want to look up what the heat, heating plant cost in, I think, twenty-eighteen, because that was on its own warrant article.
Yeah.
And we're thinking that those are like the two big.
And the well, you know, the well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would be very expensive.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, this is like conversation for our next meeting, we can talk about that.
Also, the disability fund, I just wanted to point out, with the addition of twenty-five thousand more, you're gonna be at four hundred, I'm imagining that could draw a conversation at the next meeting.
We, Liz will happen to speak to it, Liz speaks to it every meeting, that that will be one child, it could be one child, and we're.
Probably two, but yes.
Depends on the kid.
Yeah.
Really depends on the kid.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page that, that that's coming, you're gonna hit the four hundred thousand mark, and I think that'll draw some attention.
Um, yep. I guess I'm just, I know that this isn't like anything we can change, but page forty-two and forty-three.
Uh-huh.
I guess, and I, I'm just trying to understand like what I'm looking at, so when someone asks us about it, because it's in our packet, I feel like I don't remember seeing this in years past.
It was in last year's, for sure.
Was it, okay. Is this for the, this just related to the school budget or the whole town?
I think it's, it's the entire town.
The town.
Okay. Okay. Just because we're using the fund balance retention, I, I just want people to see that. Like, we don't retain fund balance.
Right.
As is the school district, so, just if someone thinks that we're hoarding one point five million.
I think you just pointed out that this is the entire town, this is a document that every single citizen, uh, member of Strapper got.
Yeah.
I've never had anybody question that.
Yeah, well, our, our fund balance is around in these two pages. And, and I just don't understand, Rob, why like the IMV at the top of the page as of December thirty-first, it says two seventy-eight.
Yeah.
But then down everywhere, like asset summary, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, says two fifty-five, eight fifty-five.
So if you look down at the bottom of this page, it says month of December, blah, 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 then it says fiscal year to date, January to December is at two seventy-eight. So I, I think what they're saying is that there was some cash dividends and stuff that had bumped that up. You can see the fourteen thousand three fifty. So you see the closing balance of two fifty-five, and then there's cash dividends and income of thirteen thousand three hundred fifty. So they're giving you the total.
Okay, okay.
So if you take everything.
Yeah, this is, we earn money on these accounts.
Fifty-five plus fourteen is.
But that's, the two seventy-eight is opening balance, right?
Yes.
As of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
I. Oh, yeah, I see what she's saying. Okay, so we purchased sixty-four thousand three hundred fifty-eighty-six, but we spent eighty-seven thousand, so it was two seventy-eight, nine oh-four, fifty-nine. My, uh, plus sixty-four, three fifty-eighty-six, minus eighty-seven, three ninety-nine, seventy-five. Comes to the two fifty-five, eight fifty-five, seventy.
So that was for the windows, right?
I would imagine all that, yeah.
And, um, and then we have the dividends.
I'm gonna tell you something, I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
Let's get, let's get, let's get Gene, let's get Gene to come and talk to you guys about this bad boy. I would just say that the bottom line for me is, as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the balance was two hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Okay.
That seems clear to me, but I don't know what all the other numbers are telling you.
Alright.
Okay, so then we have page forty-six is our bond. And then we have the, um, enrollment report.
It's supposed to be. And once again, that's supposed to be January, but I can't do it for this. This report can't be January thirty-first or the end of January, because, um, we are meetings before then. But it will be January thirty-first for the annual.
And then we should have the cost per pupil by the time the budget hearing occurs, because that comes out in January.
Last year it came out on January tenth, and I can't promise that it will this year. I did, I did call the DOE, but I didn't get a response, so.
Okay, so that's it with that. Uh, if you see anything else.
Let me know.
You know, let Rob know before he starts printing more of them. And.
Um, just the, um, district enrollment report says as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
I know, I just saw that.
Oh, okay. Easy to fix?
Yep.
Probably because it originally said January thirty-first, because that's when it's supposed to be. But I didn't, I can't do January thirty-first this year for this report.
Alrighty, so, um, correspondence, we didn't have any correspondence, but I will say, I've heard a lot of positive feedback about how excited the kids were to see both deans dressed up for Christmas or for the holidays, whether we're gonna go it.
And we did have one correspondence. It was, remember from the last meeting, there was something that came in afterwards with families.
Right, okay, you can say that after I'm done, I just want to talk about how happy we are that the kids were so happy with the deans, they're doing a very good job. And we're really excited, uh, here we are on WM War, I didn't get a chance to see it, but I know I, um, my husband came home from dropping kids off and, um, telling me about seeing people all over.
Sprinkles. Sprinkles the elf. Very loud sprinkles, it's all.
Sprinkles the elf, yes, and she was holding her, she was telling Joshua that he saw candy from her shoe, he was laughing hysterically.
Just saying, you know, sprinkles the elf and Santa are not our demons, they just.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Right.
Anyway.
Sprinkles the elf and Santa, or sprinkles the elf and Santa.
And I think we got a lot of feedback from the community of how happy people are. Which is great, now what did you want to talk about? I'm sorry.
Um, we, we had a correspondence that came in after our last meeting that had to do with the funds that we were talking about, that didn't, the name didn't get back.
What was the name?
Robin.
Robin Fiesek also wrote to us about the budget here, uh, the hearing we had on the unanticipated funds from the I-rate reimbursement.
E-rate, yes.
E-rate.
I am.
She wasn't I-rate.
Oh, my goodness, alright. Good, okay, nothing else, alright, community calendar, oh, I wanted to say, YouTube did a great job in the last community calendar.
That was very good.
That was really good. Eric, A-plus.
What'd I write about?
You were writing about the fund balance and about the projects and the process, what we're gonna be going through.
Nice.
For the capital. Really very, it was like, you know, usually I skim them and, you know. Um, but I read that carefully and I just thought, wow, this is great.
Very good, so, good job, we have another one in the future, I know we.
Yeah, it'll be done, it'll be, yeah, we gotta get one in by the fifteenth, and I think it's all budget season stuff at this point, so we'll be just kind of building on that.
Right, and I guess you probably know, by the fifteenth you have to have it in?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we're gonna have them, uh, yeah, we should have our total number, right? Are you gonna do the total and the increase, or what were you proposing?
If we, if we have it by then, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Community updates, policy committee. And I really, I just want to say again about the community calendar. I did that for so many years. The fifteenth comes in one so quickly, I thank people so much for doing that. I used to stress, like, please do that thing. I did it only five years straight, yeah, it's so, I don't know.
Alright, so I think we just have a second reading for all the ones we had the first reading.
We do, and I didn't receive any feedback from anybody, so I didn't bring anything to the policy committee, so it stands as they were written last time, I just put them in again.
Okay, so, um, if we're all set, you want to make a motion then to accept these policies?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept for final reading. The following policies as presented in our packets. Policy BAT, school board use of electronic communications. Policy DFA, investment. Policy DIA, fund balances.
Okay, do we have a second? I have a second, okay, discussion? No discussion? Alrighty, here we go. Katrina.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes, great.
Um, do we have a policy committee meeting scheduled?
We don't, I thought we did, I thought we had, our last meeting, we had discussed it, but then I'm like, there's not one on my calendar, so, um.
We were discussing it, and usually we don't do much during budget season, but.
Yeah, so, it, it, you know, we can just, we can always converse, get an email, I don't want to take up time for the meeting, but we'll get something on the calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, facilities committee, you guys met today, right?
We met earlier today, um, we reviewed the facilities maintenance job description. Um, we're gonna provide a little additional feedback on that. Uh, we went through the, we started to talk about the presentation that we'll put together for next meeting for the IMP fund and, um, projects that we plan to spend money on. So I think we've already talked about a lot of the stuff, but just incorporating things like, um, establishing that minimum threshold where we're comfortable with. And also, we talked about, just talking about the surplus we've had in years past. And how we're trying to kind of spend down some of the money by putting more money into that fund versus having unanticipated expenditures for emergent repairs. Um, so we'll have some slides to review at the next meeting.
Okay, good.
Um, we did talk about the priorities, and it's similar to what we've discussed before with the, the water lean-to. I think the water treatment system is another thing, we've gotten some updates about, um, just our systems are antiquated and kind of beyond their service life. So there's things that are, um, I guess our neutralizer is creating some complexities with the water with hardness. So, just things that we need to think about in the future as we go forward, trying to figure out how to prioritize the type of structure and stuff.
We're, um, we were talking about getting the representative from Second Wind out here to do a little presentation for all of us about the, about it. So that'll be coming at some point.
Great, yeah, good.
You've been asking potentially to do an update on the boiler.
Yes.
So prior to the holiday break, um, we had an inspection happening with our boiler, not our boiler, it's our hot water heater. Because the, we had some leakage, we had some water in places where we didn't think it should be. They came out, they inspected it, and they said that the hot water heater had failed yet again. So people that have heard board meetings over the last few years have heard this probably three times now. So we replaced one about five plus years ago, we replaced one a couple of years ago, and now we replaced another one now. So that's three boilers in less than six years, or sorry, hot water heaters in less than six years. Um, I did reach out to Second Wind, and that's where I think this, that part of the conversation about having presentations coming in. He, he believes the most likely culprit is the high iron and high hardness. We've addressed the iron before the holiday, but not obviously before it had done whatever damage it was going to do. Manganese might be part of that as well, I don't know, I just know he mentioned specifically iron and hardness. So the iron and manganese are much lower now, but the hardness is still relatively high because of what you mentioned, the neutralizer. So that'll be something that he would have to come out and really explain to everybody and then tell us what the solution is, which is removing the neutralizer, replacing it with something else that's more modern and doesn't add hardness back into the water. He believes that would then help both our hot water heater as well as things like the dishwasher, anything that heats water. Uh, because all that hardness comes out in the heating process, it scales up and, and causes failures.
Yeah, it's just, it's just amazing to me that, I don't know if it's the newer pieces of equipment um, that don't last as long or whatever, but I think we've always had hard water. But it seems to be the pieces of equipment are failing easier. Um, I know Nottingham is going through this with their boilers, I guess for years, they had this heavy-duty old boiler with like large pipes and such, and they never had a problem. They got the new boiler that is very electronic. And if those of you who follow this, they have been out of school more than they've been in school this year, because they don't have heat in the building or there's different issues, so, I don't know.
Well, in it, not this last summer, but the year before, there was a lot of rains, I don't know if there was more, I don't know if the groundwater was different, but.
Of course, yeah, it's definitely. I just wonder why the change, you know?
Yeah.
Everything's failing.
So we're planning to meet another, have another facilities committee meeting prior to our next board meeting, so we can get those slides.
Get the slides ready, so we'll be able to see them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you, or at least paper copies of them, if you don't, whatever, so we can just.
Yeah, I'll probably just send an email to you for some questions I have about some information that, some facts and figures I can put together for this.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Then I will try to ask my buddy to take a look at the lean-to on Monday after he drops off the pigs. Alrighty, um, food service committee, no, we did not have any. Okay, education committee, no, that's interesting.
Yeah, I, I think, I have a feeling that because of sort of then, ever, it started to change once the new regulations, I guess you could say, whatever, um, came out about school suspensions and how those are handled, I don't think that cases are being brought to the education committee.
Okay.
I did ask about it briefly at our deans' meeting, um, and that was kind of the general consensus that I got, but it wasn't very clear. So the next meeting, the next actual education committee meeting that we have, I'll, I'll try to get more information.
As long as whatever's going on with kids is communicated to our student service.
I, I've been, I've been told in the past that that was happening regularly.
Okay, good, good. Okay, uh, wellness committee, we're meeting next week, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Three-thirty?
Coming up, whatever day it is, it's coming up.
I think it's, oh, not next week, it's the, before next meeting, the twenty-second? I think it's the twenty-second.
Yeah, that sounds right, let me just, I'll tell you for sure.
Alright.
Twenty-second. Wellness, it's not, the Wednesday, the twenty-second, at three thirty P M, it looks like.
Okay, transportation? Okay, um, athletic committee, we did meet today, we reviewed, uh, we do a fall survey after the fall scores. We got information from that, which is good feedback for us to have. Um, we will be doing another one after the winter sports. And one of the things that we did talk about, oh, we did prove those posts for the basketball, uh, baseball and soccer, oh, no, softball posts that you.
The postman?
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, I think we're going to talk to, um, let me see, we, locker room. One of the things that we talked about in the locker room is, it's in the girls' locker room, this volleyball net and the poles are just like thrown on the floor. So if we're getting, if we're going to get the new volleyball net, we talked about coming up with a way to store it. And we were looking it up, looking it up when we were meeting, and there's actually like, um, it's like ninety-nine dollars. It's a rack, a metal rack that you could put on the wall and you could fold the net and just hang it on there so it doesn't get damaged, because the, the nets are not cheap. And then, um, we were also talking about finding if maybe in the future, um, the girls' locker room let me just say shoes, the girls' locker room has like some tables stored in there.
Tables and chairs.
Right, and I guess we were wondering if maybe.
We have a plan, we just haven't had time to.
You do? Okay, great.
We're thinking this coming summer that the chairs and tables will no longer be in there.
Okay, because we were talking about, um, I guess in the boys' locker room, there's an alcove. And we were wondering if we could maybe put a wall there with like some type of a door so we could store all the athletic equipment in there. So it's more, we can talk about some more, but we're just, the athletic equipment for our, our like basketball, volleyball, it's just like all over the locker room. And getting damaged, and so then we have to replace it again. Um, so this is just some feedback, and it's only because Kristen's in there, so she sees it, I have no way.
Jeff and I did a tour of all of those during one of the workshop days, and we had some pretty intensive conversations about that both locker rooms need to be cleaned up, cleaned out and, and better organized, so we already have some ideas in place, but we figured we'd do it this coming summer.
Great, great, I'll show you the, um, little rack thing, we are getting in that, it's, it was really good.
Sure, send me a link.
Okay, the other thing is, um, we know that, that Rob, Jeff has done a nice job like organizing the trophy case. We're hoping we can come up with a way to also, um, display the historical trophies and photos. I think Jeff is hanging some of them in there, but we have all these trophies. And so we're, we're wondering if, um, the co-ground students sometimes for a senior project build things like that? If we can maybe do another, another display case, I know my son, one of my kids, um, he built for a senior project the big display case over at the track, up on the track, the co-ground. And just to come up with another way to have more areas to display this stuff, because the commute, especially to have it in the hallway, because we have so many multi-generational families in town, when they come for either parent, you know, open houses or if they come for like Christmas in Strapper or town meetings, they look for these things. It's like, oh, my, when I was here, you know, so we don't want to remove them and not display them, so that's something we're talking about. Oh, and the rest is, is just technical stuff that will not move.
Don't forget to either get me minutes.
I will.
No, no, I'm, I'm reminding every committee, don't forget to either get them to me or put them into the folder, you know, yourself, if you can, I can't remember. I think I shared it with all the committees, but I know that facilities could definitely.
I'll send it to you.
But if you send it to me, I'll be more than happy to post it.
Okay, and then, I don't think we have anything else, because we have your delegate and the dam committee.
I have a question about athletics, I think it's athletics, sure. Um, I've been hearing feedback that a lot of other schools due to low enrollment in basketball don't have B teams. Um, so I just didn't know, it sounds like our students on B teams don't have as much of an opportunity to play because there's that deficit in other schools. So just something to bring up that I, a few people have brought it up, and it sounds like, you know, the history of how much they used to play but it sounds like there's not as many games as are scheduled for the B team because of that, other schools not having that possibility.
I don't know about the girls, but the boys, I think there's only one town that doesn't have a B team, maybe two.
I think the girls don't have as many games.
Maybe it's the girls, because the boys have, they're basically.
So just something to think about, because I think, um, what I was hearing is the timing of when those teams are established and when. So just something to think about, because I think, um, what I was hearing is the timing of when those teams are established, and when, they don't have a rec team either, because there was low enrollment in our rec team for that beach group, so they're missing out on opportunity that I think if the timing of it, or if we had known that other schools didn't have a B team, it might not have been an issue, and they could have done rec, but I think the timing needed something to do the rec team and sign up because they had already thought they were playing B team.
So, the tryouts were, were actually after the deadline for rec.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I know the boys, there's definitely enough for boys, because they're, they, I, I, I think it's only Hamburg that doesn't have a B team for boys, so maybe the girls, I do think.
Is there some kind of, like, is there like a?
Title nine.
Is there like a group?
That's what I was.
Yeah, we have it for title nines, we have the boys, we have to have girls, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Um, is there like a committee, um, I, I guess like athletic committee where all the towns have a representative that can figure out there?
Yes, the athletic directors meet, yes, yes.
Something that they could have kind of forecasted or.
We could ask them about that, but if we have, what Rob was just saying, title nine, you can't have a boys' team without offering a girls', so if you're suggesting.
Can they just play those, if there's only a couple towns, can they just play each other more often?
That would have to be the athletic directors organizing that, but I will ask.
Yeah, it's a question.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because everyone else must be in the same position.
I didn't know that about the girls' beach.
Yeah, because the girls' team has so many.
I've already written it all down, I'll talk to Jeff about it, and I'll have him reach out and speak to other A Ds if needed to get a better grasp on what's going on. And we'll, we'll get it rectified, because title nine, offering our boys something that we don't offer our girls could become problematic for us, I mean, eh, there may be a clause in there that says if there's no way to fix it, then, then, but once again, I know that we have to make every effort to provide equal opportunities, so.
So, so you're concerned, what I'm hearing, or, or parents are concerned that the girls in the B team don't have as many games, competitive games to, to play, so it's not that they're not having practices, they're not, they're not having as many games, and because they're not having as many games, they could have done rec.
Right, but the timing didn't align, right, so they did, by the time that they realized there weren't many B games scheduled, the rec had already closed.
Okay, so.
There was no team because there was only, I think only two people signed up for rec, so there was no team.
Okay, so, so what we have to do next year is figure out in advance, before tryouts, saying there's only going to be maybe four games, how, so if you want to do another league.
Right, to give the opportunity.
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay. So the boys, they have rec teams for all, all through, even eighth graders, yeah, okay. Alrighty, um, where are we? I guess that's it for communities. So future meetings, so the twenty-second, we have a meeting, budget hearings, twenty-ninth. And our annual meeting is the eighth. And we go from there.
The budget calendar says that I need to post the budget hearing by a certain date, my question is, is this posting? Because I have it here, I have it hanging on the wall in the S A U, is it the library, is that what it means, or is there need to be a special notice that says like in big letters, budget hearing?
I would put it on the Facebook page, I would put it at the library, I'd put it at the town hall.
It's there.
Okay, so we're posting it.
But it's posted as part of our board meeting?
It's like a, it's like a running posting.
Oh, no, 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 you have to do a special.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, no, you have to do a special budget hearing.
Is it just a single piece of paper that says, okay.
Where it's located, times, so, yeah, and then there's no date.
It's not one like a, like a, uh, special meeting that needs to be in a newspaper or anything?
Nothing.
We've never, no, no.
I thought there was a couple ones that needed some different. But it's just time, I think, timing.
You just have to have the actual budget hearing posted everywhere.
And we're far in events, I mean, I just, I was just clarifying, because I couldn't remember what we did last year, so.
What is it, like ten days before?
Yeah, we still got plenty of time.
Okay. Okay, any other, other, other?
Were we gonna go into non-public?
Oh, yes, we are, and I just want to, I have one other, um, only because, again, everything has changed, there's so much change over the years, and then we had, you know, COVID, which caused a lot of change, I was wondering, we aren't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry that I'm yawning as you look at me, I apologize, had nothing to do with you, I'm since three, so I'm so sorry.
That was so funny, that was so funny.
It's getting late, daddy.
That was really funny, all I want to know is, our, our eighth graders used to go to Washington, D C.
Yes.
Okay, it was a historical, I think it was something Gettysburg or way down, like, it was like a three-day trip. I know that with COVID, we started doing like one-day trips, or, you know what I mean, like then we went to New York, are we ever going to do Washington again?
Hasn't been discussed, would you like it to be?
I don't know, I, I, I think it was, a really big deal, they did that for years, the kids went to Washington, D C, it was this great trip.
No, I, I went to Washington, D C for my great trip, I thought it was a really memorable experience.
Yeah, we did it as, like, Bruce, um, Patrick, who was chair for many, many years, he worked in Dover Middle School, and they, he organized, he used to go every year to the Washington trip, he gave us all of the information, like, we took the tour buses, the whole thing, we did what they did, but we did it for years, and it was, it's so historical, you know, they went to the Smithsonian, they went to.
In Rochester, we took our seventh and eighth graders every year, um, I was part of about six of those trips, so I get it, I get the history behind it, it, it's true of a lot of communities. I don't know why you replaced it with New York, I just know that New York has been the most recent, and it's the one that's approved for this year.
It was COVID, it was COVID.
COVID made you want to stay closer to home?
Yeah, it was like, well, I think at first we, we were doing something, we just went to Boston one year for a day, and then they just said, well, maybe the, maybe the, the bus line still wasn't because of COVID stuff, they weren't booking, so we went to New York, it was just.
And New York's awesome, and it would be, maybe need to say, let's alternate, one year, New York, next year, D C, and that way, in your seventh, eighth grade years, you'll get to go to both of you, can fundraise enough money to do so.
Anyway, that's all, I just have been thinking about that, but, we have a motion?
I'm going to non-public under RSA ninety-one, A three two B.
Wait a second. Hey, Eric.
Yes.
Jess, yeah, Katrina, Kyle, and Debbie, we're going to non-public, you can go, we're done, and then.
We need to add the. And we're.
Are you sending a slight early deal for the kids to go to Washington?
I'm on Rob's schedule, three A M.